I'm glad you got that letter since it was up to 10.
Brett, Brett wanted me to go. Do you guys see a reason for me to leave there?
I wouldn't go, but you're more than welcome to join.
If Brett's going down, he'll want to jump in with it, right?
I don't.
I don't care. I don't know that you have to.
I think the only reason I went to the one is I want you guys to understand.
We're gonna call in, we're gonna call in some help from our legislative side.
Paul did a good job of explaining that. We pushed hard, so.
I sat there in the water. I was sitting there and I said, you understand? And he goes, well, realistically, how many cubic feet per second? We're talking six, 700? And I'm like, no, 2,000.
Yeah.
And he goes, what? And I'm like, yeah. I mean, there was enough water in 2011 that it was over the top of the bridge. They had to quit using it. Are you serious?
I'm very, very serious. And that's only 10 years, 12 years ago.
Yeah.
And there was less snow on the ground this time of year.
That wasn't even a bad year.
Not historically, you're right.
Not historically, no.
It warms back up, it goes back up to 40 in a week. We're gonna have a foot of extra snow and it goes back up to 40 in a week. It's gonna be mild. I'm literally getting, before I came to this meeting, I'm getting water out of my window well and then rerouting my water coming from the, to get on the yard because it was, wasn't the window well. Ah, I just thought, all right.
When's the next meeting?
Tomorrow.
No, your next commission meeting.
First, first, first.
Is that the 7th or something? No.
It might not serve.
Yeah.
Pledge of allegiance.
Okay. Okay, perfect.
Okay, welcome to the Morgan County Commission meeting, February 21st, 2023. It's a couple of minutes past 5 o'clock. We're gonna go ahead and get started. I have asked Commissioner Wilson to offer the prayer and lead the pledge of allegiance.
Our Father in heaven, we bow our heads before thee and we wish to thank thee for our blessings, our blessing of living here in this valley and we're thankful, Heavenly Father, for the moisture that we have received. We pray especially that it can come down at a reasonable rate and be held in our reservoirs and that our citizens can be safe. And we're thankful, Father, for the good citizens of this county and all that they do for one another and pray that they'll continue to bless us. We're grateful for those who serve our country and ask thee to watch over and bless them at this time. Pray that our leaders can make good choices and do the very best for our country. We ask thee, Heavenly Father, to bless us this evening that we can make good decisions here as we meet together as a community and as a commission. Appreciate all of thou does for us and we pray for these things humbly in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. We will move to item B, our consent items. We have one item, which is approval of the February 7th, 2023 meeting minutes. Are there any adjustments to the minutes that have not yet been provided to Julie?
Yes, and I haven't, have not meant, sent them to Julie. Yes, it is hot. On every one of the items that you've you have here, were you talking about, do you need to put in there where it says Chair Newton absent? Do you need to put Commissioner Newton? Or Commission Chair Newton? Commission Chair Newton absent?
Probably.
Because it's through the whole thing. Okay, that's the only thing I saw.
Okay, any other adjustments to the February 7th meeting?
Oh, yeah, one more. Sorry. Under the, when we were talking about the dome project, it says they have selected the six-foot dome. Should be 60-foot. Yeah, that's a huge difference. Because down below, you do have, it is 60-foot, but up there, under a two, it says six-foot. Okay? And I think that was it. I think.
Okay, we'll look for a motion to approve the February 7th, 2023 meeting minutes as amended.
So moved.
Second.
A motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I will abstain as I was not present for the meeting. Okay, motion passes. We will move to item C, Commissioner's declaration of conflict of interest. Are there any conflicts of interest with any item on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will move to our public comment period. This is an opportunity for the public to address the commission. We do have two public hearings on the agenda for this evening. The first is a budget hearing, amending the 2022 budget. And the second is a public hearing for the M&amp;D Nelson rezone for property located along Old Highway Road. Any other items? Feel free to come and address the commission now. Okay, seeing no public comment. We do not have any presentations this evening, so we will move into our action items and we'll start with action item one, which is discussion decision, Wasatch Peaks Ranch Public Infrastructure District ratification. Aaron?
Good evening. Aaron Wade with Gilmore and Bell. We've been helping WPR with the creation of their districts the last couple of years. So as you recall, a couple of, I guess a year and a half or so ago, you had approved some local districts and then shortly after that, you approved a public infrastructure district. There was, you know, as we were going through that process of getting the district created, we were working to finalize some boundaries as a few things were in flux. And that caused us to pass the, you know, to lapse the timing that the Lieutenant Governor's Office would still approve the creation of the district. And so now, as we're looking to do that, you know, get that approval and get that certificate of creation from the Lieutenant Governor's Office, we need a ratification. We need a subsequent action to be taken by the county, you know, to approve that, to kind of reset the clock so that we can get that packet in. And so we've submitted, you know, I worked with, with your county attorney to get an updated ratification resolution to the, to the commission, to the county, as well as just an update to the governing document. And so we worked with him, sent him red lines and he was okay with the changes, you know, proposed some, you know, some tweaks here and there in the resolution. So I think we landed in a spot that at least he was comfortable with. Don't want to speak for him, but that was my, my take. But the, the changes that would be made here from the previous iteration would just be to, one of the board members is swapped out, so Jenny Roberts now on the board instead. So that was one change. And then just tweaking the boundaries to as they currently exist and carving out some of the lots that have been sold previously, just because we do need all property owners to consent. So we don't have them at the table today, so we've taken those properties out, but included them in the annexable area so that they can, you know, down the road, go to those property owners. And if they consent, you know, bring them into the district at that point in time, but leaving them out, you know, for the time being, because again, we don't have that, that consent in hand. So those are the, the tweaks that, that we've done and otherwise it's just a ratification of the, the previous actions that were taken. And then just authorizing again, you know, the signing of a plat map, the signing of a notice of boundary action, which is what the Lieutenant Governor's Office will require in the submittal packet. That's what they give. It has the resolution attached, then a plat map signed by the county surveyor as to the boundaries. So, so that's what's in the, that's what's in the packet that we've sent. I think the only other thing that I would add that's a change from last time is, you know, due to that clock, sometimes we brush up against the deadline for Lieutenant Governor's Office because a plat map will take longer to go through a surveyor's approval process. So we've just added language that if that plat process, you know, the, the final entity plat goes past the 30 days, that the effective date of the resolution will be the date that that plat gets approved as certified by a commissioner or the county attorney. And again, that's just to make sure because, you know, surveyors take the time they need to take. And we just want to make sure we comply with the deadlines of the Lieutenant Governor's Office.
So I got a question for you, Aaron, to ratify this. It looks like we actually need to vote on a resolution. Does that sound correct?
That's correct. Yeah. And there's a, the resolution, I think, that, that we provided and that Garrett reviewed. That should be part of your packet.
And then do we have a number on that? Do you want to know where we're at? Resolutions? Please.
We see R23 dash something.
Yeah.
TBD.
Aaron, is it your understanding? I noticed that it says that the resolution will be read in its entirety. Is that your understanding that it needs to be read?
No, I don't think we need to read that in, in the entirety. I think the idea is that it's, you know.
Introduced in writing, okay.
Yeah.
Is this solidifying with the corners that we had talked about and everything? Is that, is that inclusive in here?
Yes.
With Trevor's stuff and?
Based on, based on the alte survey, it does include all of those areas. You know, stepping back on the history, Aaron wasn't as closely involved. We had, when we ratified this in the spring of 21, we couldn't decide whether it was going to be the areas of our property where we've alte surveyed the property, which is, if you can remember the map, there's the pinch point and then you go south down there. We still only have meets and bounds surveys, you know, the, the historical survey of section corners and section lines. We didn't, back in 2019, do an alte level survey on that. We did do an alte level survey for the parts that contain the development, everything north of that pinch point. That was what was updated there with Trevor, with, with those same corners. Obviously, that can be amended as Jeremiah wants to come out this spring and do some further investigation. I don't know if he's made a presentation yet, but after the snow melts, he'd like to come out and just put his eyes on those corners to take the diligence to the next level. But we have had a number of, of, both the planning director, county engineer, and then a number of others in the county come out to look at where those are right now, but we'll work with Jeremy in the, in the spring. So as it stands right now.
Around August, September.
Yeah. It was 48, it was 46 and down below, driving up, driving down last night. So just a little history there. And then I believe Commissioner Fackrell, you had a question about the alt, the Great Western Trail.
Right.
So I have pulled up one of the, one of the fairly user-friendly apps out there, the, the All Trails app. And it shows the Great Western Trail where it connects and there's, there's a lot of iterations of it, but the 100-mile loop starts in Fruit Heights, heads to the east, gets up onto, close to the ridge line. And there are spurs of that also going north down at Oak Hills and Clarinda neighborhoods by Ocalo. There's a number of spurs that go up there. Everything on our property, all the way to Francis Peak, or everything of the Great Western Trail is in the Davis County side. And we did do an analysis there. It does flip over into Morgan County. There's spurs of that down to Smith Lakes and those camping areas up there, but that's not our property. If you remember the, the section lines, that is one of the east-west sections near the top and then it drops down to the east into Morgan County, accepting all of Smith Lakes and it kind of runs across, across Smith Basin. If you've been up there, snowmobiles or hunting in the past, comes across and then picks a section line coming back up there. So I guess that's actually north of Francis Peak. And then it gets closer to Francis Peak and then once we are south of Francis Peak, it does move over into Davis County. But all of the Great Western Trails and the spurs behind, besides the Smith Lake, the Smith Lake spur down there is, is it in Davis County that we can see? And I'm happy to download that map and email it to everybody here, just so that, because there was a concern about trails. Aaron can speak to the nuances of the trails and the PID would be responsible for trails that it constructs.
Yeah.
It constructs and then the PID owns those. Should it be an improvement where PID dollars are used to construct and maintain those trails?
Okay, because I, when I flew over it last year, there was a big, major trail that went right through the upper portion towards the peaks of your prop, I mean, I think it was on your property, but it was the trail, the main trail that went all the way down around up to those lakes. There's two lakes, north of Francis Peak. And those two lakes, it was below that. So I just want to verify that that is either going to stay open to the public or are you going to be closing that off? Because if that's the case, the second part of your agreement says that you're gonna have it open to the public, those trails. And so I just am trying to make sure that it's all correct.
Correct. I understand those, those lakes, there's three lakes down there, that's the Smith Lakes. And all of that property is not ours. That's, I believe, owned by the Forest Service.
Right, it is.
And those, those trails that go down to their dead end, I have ridden all of them back in diligencing the property and having fun on a dirt bike. But I have been to all of those dead ends and obviously I've been on the trails down below from our property. They don't connect. So those, we won't block those. And even though both the trails that are, go over the WPR into property in Davis County, as well as the road to Francis Peak that both the Francis Peak maintenance crew uses and all of the public that uses, that was just something that we knew was an obligation to keep open.
Okay.
And so all of those will be, will continue to be maintained. We have done nothing with the Davis County property other than put a few signs up there where the old Forest Service sheds are that seem to have turned into some bullet magnets. And we continue to put more signs up there, but otherwise, that's the only point of connection to the WPR property. I can ensure that. And I've blocked that entire Great Western Trail along the ridge line on the Davis County side.
Okay.
I will send you the map.
All right. Well, okay. And this spring, maybe we'll go take a ride over it.
Yep, we can drive right up to Francis Peak.
Okay. I have another question, something you just stated, Aaron, about the people that, I mean, we're trying to get this now approved to the Lieutenant Governor's Office, but yet when the people bought it last year or throughout this year, they bought those lots. Now, they're not included in this PID, so are they going to be paying for any of this infrastructure?
They will, but we were gonna have to go through a special consent with the district that then annexes those, there's 41 home sites that have been conveyed so far. And we'll have to do a special consent through the district to annex them into the district. All of our transactional documents and all of our historical membership documents that we've provided disclose that there is an obligation and that we will be putting, utilizing a PID to help with the infrastructure on WPR. So.
But they're not obligated to be within that?
They're not. They could, they could vote, they could choose not to participate in the consent, but it would reflect poorly on their membership.
Okay. All right.
It's a risk we're willing to take as the PID if they were to, to opt out.
Okay, now I noticed that the, so basically it went from 10,000 acres, 10,100 and some odd acres down to 90, 99,000 something, 9,900. Is that because of those ones that have sold off?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
All right.
Yeah, we checked that, but as we were trying to square it up, that was one of the questions I sent to the surveyor engineer and he confirmed that.
And the surveyor has reviewed both through the preliminary plat and the final plat and the recordation process that where those, where those detailed legal boundaries are of those 41 home sites.
Okay. Another question with that is, and somebody can correct me on this question. Says that under the inter-local agreement, the district to retain only the power necessary to impose and collect taxes or fees to pay for these costs. Do you collect them or is it still going through the property?
It'll still be, it'll still be a line item on the tax bill. Yep.
And then it says that you, it actually says that it's going to be, some of this infrastructure is going to become public. Is that correct or is it still private?
So that, you know, if you have a specific detail, but, so as you recall, there's those local districts that have been created, you know, the utility district and the EMS district up there. Those are still public entities. So let's say a sewer line was constructed and dedicated to, to that local district. That's still a big public utility. And so that's the idea here is that the public infrastructure district, the taxes and bonds are utilized for public uses. And that's usually, you know, defined as dedication to a public entity for ownership.
But then the limits of the local districts that are the operator and receive those, those infrastructure components, the limits of the local district are the same ones that were approved, I think in 2020, which is the limits of WPR. So it's the public of WPR paid for by the, the taxing authority of the PID and the local district will have taxing authority. Everything is paid for and assessed only against the homes that are in the, in the legally defined districts, which are WPR.
Okay, because in, in your, I don't know what page it is, but anyway, it says operations and maintenance limitations. The district shall dedicate the public improvements to the county. Okay? Or other appropriate public entity or owners association in a manner consistent with the approved development plan. And the district shall be authorized, but not obligated to own, operate and maintain public improvements. So is that now falling upon us to maintain?
The, the second part of that, the other public, the other public, what was the word?
The public entities.
The public entity is the local improvement district. So we'll dedicate those to the district. The district will have to make a motion to, to receive those. We have district engineers out there reviewing all of those. In fact, we just did a ICA Improvement Completion Agreement review with the county engineer and the district engineer for those improvements. But the dedication all occurs, they go to the operating entity, which is the local district. And that's just the templated language because most of the time in these kind of scenarios, the infrastructure asset is paid for by the developer and then dedicated to the county. But in this case, the county would never receive those if we asked you to take care of our sewer pipe. We'll be dedicating those to our operating district, which is the, the WPR utility district.
Okay. All right. I just didn't know that all of a sudden we became the ones that are responsible for these public entities. I mean, these improvements, and I don't want to be.
No, that's a great question. Yeah, that was our commitment and these are the, these are the vehicles that we're using to meet our obligation for providing, you know, utilities and road and fire.
Okay. And, sorry, I've got a lot of questions here. Under annexation and withdrawal, the county, and under item B, it says the county, by approval of this governing document, has consented to withdraw of any area, withdrawal of any area within the district boundaries from the district. Such area may only be withdrawn upon the district obtaining consent of all property owners and registered voters. Is that within your registered voters? Is that within the area proposed to be withdrawn in the passage of resolution of the board approving such annexation? So that annexation is not anything different than what's currently in the whole package? It's?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so you've, you've drawn the outer lines. Then we have a map in here that's the outer lines of the, you know, WPR property.
Right.
That it only applies there. Like, they couldn't reach out and grab something, you know, here in Morgan, you know, city or something like that. It's, it's only within that predefined area.
Yeah, because I just don't want you to take over the Sessions property because you want to annex it into your district and they don't want to be annexed. So, you know, I just want to make certain that that is what we're talking about here is that it's only within your, your original property boundaries and that you're not trying to annex in Mountain Green into your district.
No, no, you guys have drawn the lines and it's only within those limits and with the consent of the property owner at the time of, of the annexation or the withdrawal.
Okay. See if I have any more. It's a huge document, guys.
Government entities.
Yep. It's, you know, except as the, the things I kind of flagged for you today, it's the same.
I think number seven explains that pretty good, the overlap.
Yeah.
They can't just overlap and pull in stuff.
Because I was noticing on the initial district boundaries, why, I mean, I know this property is all within yours. Why is the district not including the whole area? On page, this is exhibit C versus the annexation area. Which is exhibit, well, it doesn't, it's part of exhibit C.
Yeah, so this is the, sorry, my computer is giving me, it's all of a sudden.
Some of the areas we didn't include was, were the north end down by the, north of the canal, down by the river and the train track. Those areas just, they'll never, there's no need to have a taxing authority. There'll never be any residential. It was not approved as one of our development areas in our development agreement. So some of those areas were less than accepted out of there. I'd have to look at detail. But the main areas that we wanted were where the development was going to be because that's where the value would be from a taxing standpoint for where the, where the homes and the commercial buildings are going to be. So that was what was important to us because we put on our district hat and have a responsibility to maximize the tax, the taxes available or the dollars available to the district.
Okay. So when you're putting in trails on, anyway, that page 59?
Yeah.
Of our packet, anyway. It says that you will, as adopted from time to time, trails which are interconnected with the county or regional trail system shall be open to the public, free of charge and on the same basis as residents and owners of taxable property within the district. So is that, so of course, I'm hoping that as we, we may, in the next 30 or 40 years, I don't know what kind of, you know, I'm not going to be around 40 years from now. But in fact, I know I'm not going to be walking any of those trails then either. Except from above, maybe. I just wanted to, you know, make sure that we can still continue to work with each other to try to interconnect everything that we're, so that way your people have access to the public property up in the national forest and so forth.
Yeah. I think we're open to that for what, how those, how those future trails evolve, right?
Yeah.
It's all, it's all enclosed right now. There's no interconnectivity of any trails. We have a access point on the southern end at the old Forest Service sheds. And then we have the access point through the north end at Exit 92 and through the Weaver Basin and the canal area. And then we obviously have the Whittier property. We do have a easement through the Jayron property, but I don't think the owners of Jayron would share.
Right, that's right. Yeah, I'm not worried about that part. I was worried about the upper part.
Yep.
Because I saw a lot of people up there. That's why.
Yeah, Smith Lakes is very popular with the public from the easy access to drive up from Farmington Canyon.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. And then on another page, it says the district shall be authorized to provide for the planning, design, acquisition, construction, so forth and so forth. Does that mean that you don't have to come to the county to determine these different construction, acquisition and all those other kinds of things? Design, planning?
Under state law, a PID is still subject to all of the approval, you know, typical approval authorities. So if you've got planning, zoning, plating, you know, all those kinds of things, infrastructure improvements is still subject to, you know, design guidelines of the local entities, all of that. But the district would have the ability, you know, to plan it, to, to actually go to an engineer and say, hey, we need to design this sewer line. We need to make sure the slopes are right, you know, all those other kinds of things. But it's still subject to land use authority. Yep.
All right. I think that was all. I think.
Any other questions?
I'll teach you for going over.
Sorry. So there is 41 sold, huh?
Yep.
That's good. That's good.
20 more in the queue that we're ready for.
Good.
Yeah, we're excited. Things, it's obviously the snow has been a blessing for the water as well as for the skiing. So. skiing. So it has been a great year for, for the, for the recreational activities at WPR, a great season.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion, Chair.
Great.
Make a motion to approve resolution CR-23-04. And I'll just read this first paragraph. Of the County Commission of the County of Morgan County, Utah, ratifying the creation of the Wasatch Peaks Ranch Public Infrastructure District as an independent district, authorizing and approving a governing document, an interlocal agreement, approving of an annexation area, appointing boards of trustees, authorizing other documents in connection therewith and related matters.
One second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Josh. Item number two, approval of the Rose Hill subdivision phase four plat amendment number one.
Thank you, members of the commission. Application number 22.064 was for plat amendment of part Rose Hill Phase Four. The applicant is Wendy and Dane Wilkinson, revocable trust. The project location is 5684 Garnet Drive. The current zoning is R112. They obtained that zoning classification last year about this time, and then they submitted for the plat amendment, which effectively split their property into two lots. They went through the planning commission meeting, planning commission recommended approval with the condition that they obtain a will serve letter for the second lot. Obtaining that will serve letter has proved difficult for them with Cottonwood Mutual Water Company. And so the applicant is requesting another continuance. When I drafted the staff report, they thought that they'd have it by the 7th of March, but after a further discussion with them, today they're asking to push it off to the 21st of March.
Josh, one note, the vicinity map in the packet is showing property of Peterson, not the correct property, just FYI.
Okay, I double-checked it. I don't know how that got in there.
It was in the last time, too.
Yeah, sorry.
No worries.
I don't think an excuse of not living here is a good excuse.
Is there a reason why it's proving so difficult? Anything?